Seven thirty one, so all order and I'll open the meeting. Um, do we want to do minutes really quick or anybody want to do that?
We can if you want.
Do you have, has everyone read there is uh two?
Yeah. Over fifteen.
Okay, do you have the um, so everyone is, and also where is Maxwell, is Maxwell? Neil or texted?
He's in the mirror.
Oh yeah, you're right. He, he doesn't have the meeting.
I think so, yeah.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, we could, we can always wait. I mean, kids are quiet. Um, why don't we do that? Why don't we go right to ADUs, especially since Jerry's here, even that five minutes it would take is a waste of Jersey's time, so. Um, okay, so Danielle, why don't you give us kind of the update, you know, where we're at, you know?
Sure, um, so right now, what we know is that on February second, um, all communities will need to be allowed accessory dwelling unit, um, unit by right. Um, now, we are not required to pass anything, but if we don't pass anything, I think it makes it difficult and confusing for the town and people come into the front to have the zoning code that doesn't match with the state law.
Yeah.
So what I suggested as, as our easiest and most simple solution for right now would be just to amend those sections of the bylaw that would first, the definitions, adopt the definition of the ADU, which is typically, typically, is requiring. Um, and then to make adjustments to our accessory structures and our accessory, um, uh, uses, sections and to our table of allowed uses. What I wanted to put forward and doing was, which we can definitely do, if everybody would prefer to, but I thought it was a little simpler not to, introducing a whole new chapter into the bylaw, chapter X, Y, whatever, um, with a whole, you know, statement of purpose, why do we want to allow a bylaw? We don't have to do that. Town council has said we can do either way. I just thought it might be a little bit easier for us just to adjust those parts of the bylaw to enable them, define them, and put the parameters in that we want. If we want to do a chapter, that's fine. I'm happy to draft one. I know Warren had something that we, you know, I haven't done it yet, but I, I don't know if we have a preference on that yet, but um, what I've prepared so far, um, shows how we would take our existing zoning bylaw and just amend it to adopt the definition that the state will have and how it then will fit into our, um, you know, our, our current bylaw. I did a redline version to show the, the current sections that exist, um, and then with, you know, after changes would be made, show in, in redlining. And then the other folder, which is the draft bylaw, which is what would, you know, who'd go with this, you know, this route would be submitted, um, at, for Warren article to be. Um, so that's kind of just what I prepared, just as far as, um, just to meet very most basic, we do anticipate, because we, we, Lieutenant Minister and I attended a training recently on this and or webinar, and we heard from state that they do anticipate releasing some guidelines and regulations, but they don't know when. So I think what I would recommend that we do is just ask something, so that we have something. And then if we have to amend it at a future town meeting, maybe we can just do that.
I got a quick question too.
Yeah.
When you say the state, it said they were going to do, um, guidelines and all that, but they didn't say exactly when. Did they indicate that it would be before the bylaw? It doesn't make sense that they would wait till after the bylaw goes into effect to give up, come up with the, all of the, uh, the rules and the restrictions.
It, it will not be in time for any town meetings at all.
I've not read about town meetings. I've read about the, well, the February thing when this ADU bylaw takes effect. Will we have, uh, any input from the state, any guidance from the state at that point?
Um, no, but what they did say is when they release the guidance, it'll be a very light touch. It won't be, um, here's a, you know, many pages of stuff that you have to do. It's not so much that. I think we have, I think it's more as far as, um, answering some of the questions that have come up, like some clarification of the language that they used when they built the law together. Um, I think that we have most of the information that we need right now to just adopt something that gives us a little bit of just, just guardrails. So I guess I should say, you know, looking at it together, Jerry and I kind of been, please try and, if like, um, we were looking at what we would need to allow if we don't pass anything. And if we don't pass anything, it basically just defaults to, you know, we have to allow accessory dwelling units attached or detached, nine hundred square feet or less. Um, and the way I look at our zoning bylaw, we would have to go by the dimensions of the accessory structures that are currently in there, um, which have much more permissive dimensional requirements than primary structures. So one of the things that we've talked about a little bit is to make those, um, default required dimensions the same as primary structures rather than accessories. So for example, you have to have, instead of accessory structure setbacks being ten feet from the side yard, you would have to have twenty-five feet as though you were a house. Um, you know, you have to have a rear yard of fifty feet instead of ten feet. So it, it would be, so we are allowed to put in reasonable setbacks, dimensional requirements. We had talked about requiring them to be shorter than a primary residence, which I think we threw in twenty-five feet there. Jerry and I were speaking, he recommends twenty feet would be a more reasonable size for that, but we can talk about that. Um, so those are the basic dimensional parameters that they put in as a suggestion. So kind of as a starting point, um, yes, with the understanding that it's possible, we could a week after town meeting, hear some guidelines from the state that make us say, hmm, we probably should amend this again, and then we will probably want to remember again. But, you know, we kind of didn't want February second to roll, you know, with nothing.
So one question I have though is, and I see, I can see these, and I can, cause I don't have the glasses, like everybody, I'm letting everybody. Um, I am zooming in, but, uh, and I see two hundred sixty-three, which is definitely on my list, so that's the definition. So what are the, just name off the two hundred dash whatever you want to mod in, in, um, I just, cause I've done this homework, I just want to see if we're on the same page.
Oh, sure. You mean the sections of the?
Yeah, so definitions, uh, this one is the, um, is, is not, uh, definitions, but so what are the different ones in the zoning bylaw?
Well, I'll tell you as soon as my share file gets me.
Well, we know one's two hundred sixty-three, and then if anyone else has it open, they can tell me too.
I have here, um, two hundred dash thirty-six is the accessory use.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Um, two hundred sixty-three is the accessory structures.
Yeah.
Um, the definition section is two hundred dash four.
Dash zero four again.
And then the table of principal use regulations is very small. It is two hundred dash. I want to say it's thirty-five, thirty-five, thank you. Thank you.
Did you say thirty-five?
Thirty-five.
Yeah, it's thirty-five, yes. And what was that, um?
The table of principal use regulations. That's a thirty.
I think it's thirty-five. Thirty-five? Alright, okay. And did anyone have another one section that they had questions on, or just by chance on the, from the board here that's looked at this?
Well, I read Danielle's narrative, I thought it was, uh, I thought it was well, well drafted, well put together, cause it's, it's generalized.
Yeah.
And we need to have something general.
Yep.
So we can start, start with something. Um, and then, and as she mentioned, we can make modifications to it come June.
Right.
And, uh, we, we spoke, we had a roughly about a hundred and twenty building officials. And we're all, all in a meeting, we all spoke about this, and we all feel the same way. And one of the, one of our biggest concerns are the heights of these places. They're gonna have them twenty-five, that doesn't work.
Right.
Cause then people are gonna build, they're gonna put something up there. Oh no, it's just gonna be an attic because it's not considered livable. Yeah, but what happens when you leave?
Right.
Forty-eight doesn't allow me back in that house.
Right.
My children are long, so, um, so people are gonna be, like, potentially building even larger.
Right. Yeah, I, I think, um, I'm in agreement too on, and I, that was one of the first things I've already publicly said a few times, like dimensionally, I'm, I'm awful with Danielle just laid out, which is just have them be, so sheds accessory structures and it's in the conventional sense can still be what they were, you know? But this is not that any longer, or these ADUs are not that any longer, so they just need to be looked at as a house. And I think doing so will be a win-win. It's, it's respectful to the neighbors and butters, rest of the town, and it's also allowing you a path, you know, to have a detached structure or, so I think, again, it's one of those balancing things, whereas if it was just to stay same dimensional requirements as an accessory structure, I don't think that'd be fair. So again, the person not building the ADU, it'd be great for the person building the ADU. So again, that one's a, that one's a home run. Um, question I had for you, Jerry, is, uh, one of many, but, um, wh- what do you think about existing conditions? So like, whatever person has that garage that's, you know, five feet from a property line, you know, what, what's your, what's your advice in that area?
I am receiving more phone calls about that. I've received, uh, well, over, over forty, and half of those phone calls are pre-existing structures or pre-existing, it's, I guess, illegal ADUs.
Right.
Um, that are, and they want to make them legal, and you can't. How do you make something legal if it's already non-conform?
Right, yeah.
So you're gonna have to go to the zoning board of appeals. Uh, yeah.
So that part, we're in, in, in Danielle, with, with the changes that we would make into the existing code or zoning, um, an existing use that didn't need, you know, or the previous use, say it was garage or wholly accessory, right? It's not gonna meet the new use, um, so it doesn't come even through us, it's just a ZVA, you know?
I, I think that's right.
Yeah, and which is the normal way it's done. It's not like, that's not a new thing.
Right.
That's just not conform to use, so Jerry just sends them to ZVA, and that's how, that's how that, that goes, correct?
Yeah, I think that goes, go, because these are only allowed by right if they meet the actual bylaw.
Right, right. Okay, sorry, Warren.
Yeah, so, so, you know, so I'm, um, I'm wondering about the, if it, if they, um, the property that we're talking about doesn't meet the zoning bylaw, if it doesn't already have a board of appeals approval for, you know, um, they can go to the board of appeal and get it and, 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 uh, get approval to, to build an ADU and, and, and it's clearly a non-conformant situation?
In technically, yeah.
The board of appeals have the ability to override the law?
No, I mean, in all.
They do, it's Jerry, they do it a lot.
Yeah, they do it all the time.
Yeah, it doesn't mean they'll definitely leave, they're asking for.
Well, I mean, well, you know, cause they're kind of like, you know, I, I suppose it gives another level of control over what happens there, in other words, you know, whether they say, oh, we want to be five feet from the line, and they can say, no, it's ten feet or at least, you know, and give them some, some form of, uh, some form of provisional control you wouldn't have otherwise.
I'm already being asked, we have people that have their, their primaries that are, one of them is sixteen feet away from the law lines, just twenty-five. Well, they're saying, can they put an ADU in, but just stay in line with the primary? I said, no.
Right, yeah, cause that's, that's compounding the, uh, violation.
You, you need to meet the, the intent of the law.
But if they don't meet the intent of the law in that particular case, that you can deny them, and they go to the board of appeals, the board of appeals, yeah, go ahead and do it.
Jerry, also, in, in, in two hundred, I think it could be, um, maybe thirty-six, but it mentions the separation of two, the two, if you do, um, a detached. It men, it, it mentions it's the twice the side yard setback or something is the space in between. Is that, does that apply? So that would apply as well?
That would not apply with the ADU.
Okay.
Would not apply.
Okay, so even though that, that's a dimensional thing, it still wouldn't?
Wouldn't apply.
Okay, what, for what reason?
Because it needs to, it needs to accommodate the, the bylaw itself, the dimensions, dimensional setbacks. Not the accessory, because that's really not an accessory, because now it's an ADU.
Okay, I get you, so.
It's a livable. Now you're looking at a conditioned space versus an accessory structure.
Okay, then you wanted separate from the main dwelling. Now it's like they're, they have the, the compatible uses, if you will.
Correct.
So that, that spacing, that's, that's the intent, I guess, of that particular item, number nine, right? Okay, that makes a little sense, yeah.
Another thing is too, is, um, I currently have a deed restriction to single-family homes, if they want to plan additional, an additional condition. And I, just, just to say it's gonna be continued as a single family, um, could there be any, any language drafted that we keep, that we continue with some type of deed restriction?
Um, depending on everyone.
So how would that work, Jerry, if you had the bylaws, February second, would, so would, you still ask for that, or?
Not the deed re, not the deed restriction to maintain a single family, but the deed restriction, just, just to say that you have a, you basically have an ADU, and you have a single family with, with an ADU, your restriction is, that's all you can put in your law.
Oh, meaning that's you, you, that's you, you're, you're swinging the ball, gotcha.
You know, people are gonna want to go to the zoning board of appeals.
Two of them.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, okay.
Get two eighty.
Yeah, no, that's great. So how do we do that, Danielle, to make sure that's kind of?
Uh, checking that language of town council?
Yeah, that's a good one to check, yeah. I would, don't, I don't expect an answer.
Yeah, that helps me, cause then your town becomes a, a city.
Well, if I think that, um,
Yep.
I think, Danielle, I think your, that's the right, your approach is the right approach to, uh, to, uh, just, you know, make, make changes to the existing bylaws and put these dimensional requirements in, in, so forth. And then we'll let that, and then we'll wait till your guidance from the state to do anything, uh, anything that don't test in that. But I'm, I'm interested to hear that they, that they say it's gonna be a light touch, cause every, really seem a light touch on me, yeah. Yeah.
Just a kiss.
Yeah, just, yeah.
By the state.
By the state, yeah.
Okay, um, I, I just feel like we have Jerry with us, it's very rare we can get you to, so, is there anything else? I wanted to let you talk, like, is there anything else?
There's so much to cover with this, we, we could want for hours, but the problem is, is, is no answers.
Right.
It's just, it's just in general talking.
But you feel like the, the modifications to the existing bylaws that we're laying out right now will be, will help you?
Immensely.
Yeah.
Danielle and I have been, well, she's been basically drafting, and she's been showing me what she can draft.
Okay. Thanks, Danielle, for doing that too. Yeah.
Gave them copies of it, just to get ideas, to see what, um, you know, what might.
Yeah, what might, what would fit in, if you will, not?
Yeah, well, this is one that somebody has vetted a lot of the, you know, things they have in here, so, um, so that gives, you know, not, not even as a template, but just as, here are some things that have been worked out, I've been doing it for a lot of time and do it already.
What's your thoughts too? I wanted to cover the height one, because I'm on, I'm, I'm kind of in agreement, I think, with Jerry on that. Because for starters, you know, that's where we'd be, if you, five years down the road or whatever, there, there could be a difference, but right now, I think that's a great, great spot.
That would be, I guess, the only question I would have is, uh, so we, I, and I agree, that twenty-four is perfect. But the question is, if they want to build seventy-four, they go to board of appeals, cause the board of appeals say you can go to thirty-eight?
No, no, absolutely not. I fight that. And another thing too is, um.
I'm just trying to get a feel for where, where, where the line is for them.
Well, this is gonna create, like I said, I can talk for hours on, this is, this is gonna create a lot of issue, reason being is because you put a deck on your house. A lot of people put decks on, what do they become? Sunboard, your sun, preseason. Next thing you know, the preseason becomes a fall season. That's a conditioned room.
Yeah.
So we have to put some language in that deed restrictions, restricting that.
Yeah, and I think, you know, what, my reading of the, of it too, is there's allowances for, say, terraced, you know, take up half of the setback. So here we are working to get twenty feet, say, on a side yard, if a person puts some terrace under four feet high, which is a deck or whatever.
Yeah.
They can go halfway to that, so then that starts the wall, right? You're kind of already violating the twenty feet. With a structure that might eventually become, you know, a built-up structure, and it just, it kind of snowballs.
Yeah, comes can go.
Yeah.
But it's.
But I, I kind of, I, I like, you know, would, we just have to do something before, uh, then, so it would be, so Danielle, could you, um, quickly just walk us through the schedule, like, so how many more meetings do we have to codify everything? When does it have to go to advertising, the public hearing, all that kind of stuff, like?
So I'm, we're shooting essentially for a special town meeting, January, last week of January, potentially the twenty-seventh, based on the availability of the pool.
Good.
Um, so working back from that, I would recommend if we hadn't, to schedule our public hearing, advertise it quickly, and put it on the schedule for about a month from now, so maybe that second meeting is the number that works for everything.
Okay.
That way we will have, um, we don't have to have a huge amount of time between the public hearing and town meeting, but if we have less than twenty-one days, we run into that issue again, where if the CPC doesn't give a recommendation, we tell them we can't vote. So it's nice to have the twenty-one day bump, right? But it's nice to have.
Okay.
Um, so I would like to see us do it in December, then we'll have plenty of time. Um, if we feel that back too soon, we could always do a third meeting in January, I might not want to postpone that, but so we just need, um, the three weeks to advertise, you know, like we can send a legal notice, say, um, I need to have them, I just wanted to make sure we were comfortable with everything in the draft bylaws, cause I want to have town council review them. Um, so I would just need to have the bylaws in hand.
How many more meetings after this one in order to get to what you just asked for, just to make sure everyone has a chance to read through it, make some comments before it goes to council? We have one more meeting, or?
I'd like to end to them soon.
Okay.
Because I do have to have the bylaws in hand for people to review when the legal notice first comes. So it sounds like maybe we need a little bit more time, so if we want to discuss this at our next meeting, so we're meeting, um, the two meetings in December are the second and the fifteenth. So then we would have, at that, January seventh, um.
It's kind of tight.
It is getting tight.
So can we, can we, as an exercise, have the members just email you one-on-one, so it's not meeting lots, but just with any comments or? I mean, and then you could get out, like, any, any, like, changes or recommendations to?
I'll incorporate changes.
Cause we can do that, say, by Monday, you know, that gives everyone a few days to look at, look at it, get some back.
Yeah, I'll just incorporate any changes in the draft, I'll send it off to town council, we'll work on advertising the public hearing then, and maybe we should do it for that first meeting in January.
Yeah, that'd be good. Okay.
Okay, and then we'll put this on the agenda for our next meeting, just to finalize it all together to be sure. We can make minor changes once it's advertised, but we can't make huge changes.
Okay, so, so everyone, if you would, read through, uh, what's on the share file right now, and, and email, um, Danielle with any questions or things you want to add on to it, cause we can always pare it down.
I'll, not just to interject, I would try to keep it just as general as possible. Uh, I know, uh, one of the towns, one of the commissioners, and I spoke to one of the towns, they've had a bylaw on their books for years, and they, they already told me they have, they're making major changes to this, once all this goes through, so.
Right, general. Um, yeah, in keep it to what you're, kind of, they're already telegraphing that you can do, which is dimension all of that, height, you know, things like that, which I think is made it over. But, um, and then Jerry, one last question on, uh, it's two hundred, uh, since sixties, I think, but with, um, mobile homes and things like that, um, what's your, what's your opinion on that? Like, how, are those, were those, would those be able to be themes? ADUs?
Somebody spoke about that, uh, during the meeting with the building commissioners, and, uh, one of them was, wasn't a legal counsel, but they were, um, uh, she was a, um, I gotta call the other name, and she said she didn't think that would, that would work. Cause it was.
Right. There's a, there's a lot in coverage in that, in the bylaw too, about notifying you, you know, if it's gonna be more than ninety days, or?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of. Just curious if it has anything we should be plugging.
Just for single-family houses?
Yeah.
Apparently, absolutely.
Okay.
Oh, the other thing to mention was, I know we were talking a bit earlier in previous meetings too, um, we don't currently have a short-term rental bylaw, and I think people were concerned that these could, these units could end up being short-term rentals. So the other part of what I've provided here was, um, I suggested adding a definition of short-term rentals to our zoning bylaw that we don't currently have. And then the other draft bylaws I put in there, um, simply eliminate them as a use, or they, it just is listed as permitted in, in each zoning district.
Okay, I like that.
So, so how do we know if, uh, short-term rental exists?
You're in charge of that.
You're no, I'm not. So how do we know? How do we, how do we identify that? What's a, what's a flag? How do we?
Neighbors, neighbors calling neighbors.
And you, you'll see, you'll see advertise, like, they're renting, you know, you know, that's, people need to use the word, you know, do that other than?
I've gone after three A and Bs in this community, and it was the neighbors, the, the neighbors are basically are the ones that say, is, is people just coming? We have no idea who they are.
So, so, and then, Jerry, at that point, would that be like a cease and desist type thing?
Absolutely.
Okay, and that'd be done through you guys.
Yep.
Do you guys have any, um, cause I know this could potentially add some volume to your already tough workload. Is there anything, is the select board, anybody talked about adding a staff to help you with some of this stuff, or is this?
Hell, I haven't heard anything about that, again.
Is that something that should be considered?
Not sure at this point, yeah.
I'm just curious, cause I mean, it's gonna be one of those things where you become inundated, it, it's gonna be difficult. Especially because we don't have the guidelines from the state.
By detective, unfounded statute?
You might. So, um, yeah, um, just a thought, that's all, just kind of kicking that out there.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Cause they, they would need to if this thing ends up, you know, turning into something a little messy, which I suspect it may. Um, one other question I have for you too, Jerry, um, I was looking through some ADU stuff, um, out of California, they're, they're doing a lot of drop-ins. Um, there's companies that, you know, and I don't know how that would.
Read back, you know?
Yeah, like, um, but, yeah, that's like the big thing right now.
They're small, they're very small.
Well, they are, Warren, but they're still gonna fall within the criteria. And, um, you know, my thing is, is just like anything else, that it has to be mass approved, I would imagine, or?
That's correct.
So these companies would have to go through the state, and then also, would you have the authority to work with that, or you, is this? You're like, cause I know you guys have a lot of, um.
Well, they get the approval through the state. I basically have to take the, all the, the full package and the plans that they, they deliver. I basically have to go back to the state, make sure this is a, this is a true and proper approval. Um, then, then once we do that, we basically look at their, their documentation with their boxes, meaning how many apps to this house. What, what, how, how many boxes is gonna take to make, to build this home? Sometimes it's four, sometimes it's two. Um, and we, and we want to make sure that everything matches up, and then we allow them to build.
Cause I'm just worried about, especially if you're talking about like a height restriction, and these things are being pre-ordered all over the place, and who, who knows, you know? And if, if our height restriction is different than what the state's allowing them, you could, and you see your own moment, this like if?
State hasn't given us any height, height restriction yet, though.
Yeah.
You got it. I'm just throwing it out there, cause I know, and again, you're right, there's gonna be a lot of conversation around this.
Tons, tons. I said we can talk for hours on it.
Yeah.
There's a lot to unpack there for sure.
Maxie, any questions before?
Oh, I'm all good.
Okay, thanks. Again, try to read up on it. Any questions?
Warren, anything else?
Thank you, Jerry.
Okay, well, thank you for having me.
Thank you, Jerry. Yeah.
Enjoy.
We're timing seven fifty-nine, one minute before public scheduled eight o'clock meeting here.
Anyone who's seen the two-minute Iron Drive, please sign the sign-in sheet.
Very. Technically need to wait till I, let's see. Well, we still have, you have a question? We still have a minute, so I know if you want to. Um, but, all right, so I will open the public hearing, scheduled for eight o'clock. Can somebody read the notice? It's down. Yeah, I forgot my reading glasses, so I'm useless. I'm just zooming in on my own map. Anyone get a number two, just whip it up early. All right.
There we go. A town of North Reading, community plan and commission public hearing notice. Uh, notice is hereby given that the North Reading Community Plan and Commission will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, one fourteen. At the North Reading Town Hall, uh, and online at eight P M. On the application of Stephen Weisman for the request for modification to a planned unit development special permit slash site plan review two, Midiron Drive, North Reading, Massachusetts, map and parcels eighty-five, uh, dash one, dash five. This, uh, the proposal is This, uh, the proposal is to amend paragraph eighteen of the special permit, which currently provides there shall be no parking. On the roadways within the development.
Okay, uh, if you have uh, questions, uh, please direct them through the chair, we'll start with first, uh, whoever's representing. You, sir?
My name is Jeffrey Lamb.
All right, Jeffrey.
Fifty-one double square.
Are you, is he the? You're, you're front center, buddy, you have no problem at all, you're smart, you're good. I thought you were the applicant, so. You got a good seat. All right, so just, and just need your name after, hang on. Oh, yeah, so, yeah, Ed, so Ed came to me, so Ed, I wanna welcome Ed Sheen, he's our newest member that was just appointed last night. At our joint meeting, let's select board, uh, so welcome Ed, and Ed's first piece of business, other than the one we just had, is he has to recuse himself. Cause he is a resident owner at, um, at the current uh, hearing project, so Ed can't uh. Say anything, or whatever, Danielle, what are the exact rules? Private system, so he could go that, on that side, ask questions and all, so just letting everybody know. Why Ed might not ask a question, he's sitting, staying here, all right, sorry about that, go right ahead.
No, no problem, uh, good evening, uh, my name is Stephen Weisman, I'm the attorney for the Thompson Club, uh, Union Owners Trust. Um, I'm here tonight on their behalf on this special amendment, amendment. Um, as some brief background, so this condominium is a, a. A, a series of uh, townhouses around a golf course essentially, and there are a few roadways that uh, wind throughout the development. Uh, and as part of these roadways, there are a few paved bump out areas, we'll call them, um, some of which contain mailboxes, some of which do not. Uh, and for decades, residents of this condominium have been parking in these areas, pulling in, pulling out, um, and what we're here tonight to do is, uh. Clarify that these bump out areas are not in fact part of the roadways, as you heard, the, the current language is that there shall be no parking on the quote roadways. Of the development, uh, these are separate, you can see on the plans that we submitted, um, the areas that I'm referring to. Are the shaded areas, um, that extend beyond the, um, you know, the surface of the roadways, they are, they are paved, but they are separate. Uh, from the roadways, um, and we have submitted plans for you tonight that show ten by twenty spaces that fit into these. Bump out areas in, in compliance with the town of North Reading, uh, rules, um, we have also carved out eight foot, um. No parking areas, uh, to allow the USPS drivers to pull in and access the mailboxes where the mailboxes are. Uh, you can also see those on the plan there, uh, there's dotted lines that, that, uh, in the mailboxes themselves, marked with N B. Um, and so the purpose of the amendment is to adopt these plans and clarify, as I said, that these bump out areas are not part of the roadways. But rather are, um, you know, are, are available for parking to the residents within these dotted lines, um, the. Those men would, would also allow the trustees to line these on the ground, install signs, you know, mark up the areas to, um. To ensure safe parking, um, and, and non-parking, uh, where appropriate. Um, the language in this special permit is similar, if not exactly identical to language that, uh, we're proposing. Or have proposed to the unit owners throughout the condominium, uh, we have obtained well over seventy-five percent of the unit owners, many of whom are. Uh, in the audience tonight, uh, that support this, uh, there's a need for parking in this development, there's a need to clarify. Uh, where parking is allowed and where it's not allowed, um, and that's, that's really the goal, um, of all this, so. Um, happy to answer any questions you all may have, uh, or I can turn it over for the, for the next one.
So, how many total of these bump outs are there? Hang on, just a second.
Uh, off the top of my head, uh, I can quickly count.
Yeah, I just wanna get more, okay, and then we can get into, we can talk about it, I'm excited. While you're looking that up, Danielle, what is the requirement, or what was the requirement for parking per dwelling units here? I know the, the zoning is two. What, what is this, what did this particular one have, when it was allowed or with its permit?
Well, it's a good question, I'm not sure, I'd probably have to look through the permit and the P U D zoning.
How many units is in this, this development? One seventy-two? So theoretically, it's times two, that's how many parking spots there should be, just, just on base code, just like a parking spot should be ten by twenty. What, how many parking spots are there on the property right now?
I, I don't know, it's, um.
You should know that.
Are you talking about, well, the garages, which are.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about for the, for the development, that, that would be the. That's what we're kinda talking about, as far as maybe potentially.
There's no demarcation lines in those bump out areas, they're just occupied.
Yeah, and also, if you do speak, just say your name and where, in your address, so go ahead.
David Battalion, the property manager for the association.
Okay, thanks, David. So say that again, David.
So the current bump out areas are just paved areas, there's no demarcation lines, um, separating, ready to park. Other than the, um, the mailbox areas.
Okay, and so, and I've been through the development before, so there's no, aside from these spots that you're looking for. The rest is just a driveway and a garage, so how is that looked at, Danielle, in the sense of parking on a dwelling unit? I mean, the garage is not considered a parking space, so is it just the driveway?
The parking spaces that are associated with each of the condominium structures are what's counted as their parking that's required for the joint. And then there are other things on the grades two associated with the loft and rochon and restaurant.
So Stephen, so what, and others can speak to this, so is, is the deficiency in parking because the present condo units don't? Provide the two at least, or is that kind of, they provide one maybe? Is that how it works out, or?
And, and there's, you know, there, there's guest parking that.
Right, yeah.
Who you, who use those areas, um, I know there's like, like we said, there is a garage in a, in a driveway for many of these, but for whatever reason, there are, um.
That's not sufficient.
Overflow, people have food carts, people have guests.
Okay, so that was more just a baseline question, sorry, forgive me, I'm just trying to understand, and then the other one is, when did the bump outs, like at first they started? Um, as a turnout to go get your mail, did they get enhanced at some point? Did they start as just a stone area where you pulled over, like what's the history of these bump outs? I, I don't think, David looks like he's raising his hand, maybe he has.
Yeah, not all the bump outs have mailboxes in them.
Right, I think you pointed that out, so, thanks for clarifying that, but do you know the history of the bump outs? I mean, did they?
No.
Were they always paved and always dimensionally exactly like they are now?
As far as anyone that I know, knows of, I've been managing for about five, six years, so.
For five or six years?
Yeah, but beyond that.
Yeah.
You can see from the, from the photographs on the ground too, that the, the pavement is, is, is old, there's, it's been, you know, repaved in certain areas to seal cracks. The pavement's not new, it's not, it's not anywhere new, um, as Dave said, there's, there's residents who have been there for quite some time.
Okay, yeah, and then back to my question, when I asked Danielle, did you get a count on how many bump outs and then how many with mailboxes?
Um, the, uh, sorry, I believe there are about twenty bump outs, I can't count the exact.
And is, is on the, if you guys looked at the share file, I just saw plans from Hayes that just showed bump outs. And I didn't see like a master plan showing all of, is there, was I missing something? Did you guys see that plan?
The, the page, page one is the entire layout of the condominium, and it shows. Which areas are on the, on the.
So it is on there, I just, it was, uh, not coming up for me, I, the ones I kept opening had just little, all, all just the individual ones showing. Parking spaces and everything.
Yeah, in, in the Hayes report, they are lined out and measured.
Okay.
Yeah, it should, it should be on page one of four is the, the sort of master plan, and then, um, it, it shows. It, it's, it's got labels as to which, uh, areas referred to under subsequent plans that are gonna blow out, they can show clearly.
All right, all right, now I'll open it up to the, the other members there, Warren, you're chomping to get going, so.
Well, the, the, um, original P U D plan does not show the bump outs on it. So we have no record plan showing anything other than the roadways. So when they were written for, we asked for a plan that showed the, uh, the bump outs on it.
As early as, oh, the last meeting, which was for the simulator, right?
Yeah.
They still didn't have.
Before that, we wanted that, so, the question is, have you ever submitted a plan? An engineered drawn plan, an ASB plan, because the original filing for the P U D does not have those bump outs on it.
Yeah, with the application, there's a, there's a series of.
This application.
Yes, sir.
So, there was, they were, they were not put in according to a plan, okay, they were put in at their own discretion. Not, not, not as part of a, part of a plan. So they were not considered the original as, as parking areas in any of the parking calculations, okay, that's, uh, pointed out in the N A P, so. They, uh, so what the, uh, and they were here before, we kind of found out that it was their own. It was up to them to what they did with those areas, because they didn't really have any jurisdiction over the roadways. So, um. So I understand what they're trying to do, but of course I would probably, uh, and, and I don't see any problem with them doing what they want with those, with those bump outs. Making them parking, that, that, that's fine, but we did ask that as long as they would provide us with a. An engineered drawn plan showing where those all are, so what we have on file matches what's on the ground, that's what we were after the last time. Um, but to request that, uh, and, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, but you are not in favor of removing that parking? From the P U D documents?
No, the, the, um, the, the master hearing, excuse me, the special permit would still include the line, there's no parking on the roadways.
Okay, you don't wanna change it?
No, and this will all be added, okay?
The other side's on the other side.
Yeah, I see what you mean, um. Jeff, do you have any questions or?
No, I'm still skimming through and finding out, getting some of the, the other bump outs and, and how everything's set up and. Um, yeah, I'm just kinda, I'm reviewing everything that you guys sent in.
Yeah, one, well, one of the comments that I had, again, looking at, uh, the plans was. You know, the parking was, you know, some of it looked, um, you know, some weren't legal spots, some were little hash offs or. You know, I didn't, I didn't necessarily see a common, I wasn't getting the sense they're common ten by twenty spaces. I was getting dimensions around the bump out, but not necessarily, maybe you can show me the contrary, bring it up to me if you want.
Like, are you saying that each space isn't delineated as ten by twenty?
Yeah, I mean, it's just, you're giving kind of, or they, um, the civil engineers just giving the outline of a bump out. And then we're getting lines and we're supposed to know, you know, that's, this many, and, and a lot of them are not, they're, you know, they're triangles and. Romboites and, you know, it's not all like a bunch of straight spots, so.
What, I, I don't think any of the parking spaces themselves are anything other than, than rectangles, um, I see what you mean that, you know, each individual space is not labeled.
Well, what I mean is it, you know, just like you said, in the eight foot wide area for a mailbox, that would be, or, you know, one of the issues I, I take is. Um, they, the, you can stripe, but I would, you know, I, I lean towards you have to stripe, you know? That's, that's one of the things, like, they should all be striped, if we're gonna create parking and you want us to, to agree that they're parking spots. You know, why request that they definitely be striped, and that includes the hashed out area, the no parking areas for the mailboxes, so that everybody. You, I, every residence know exactly what those bump outs are for.
Uh, the mailboxes are already.
Bumped out?
Just, you know, I believe all.
Yeah, all right, so when were those striped?
Last fall, maybe?
So are they, so did they follow the plans that Hayes had, or did Hayes just put this together? Cause it looks like Hayes just put this thing together.
Just put it together?
Well, yeah, I mean, the date's October, like, you get the day.
These plans were March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four.
March nineteenth, for all of them, or just that?
Yeah, all, all, all these.
Um, go ahead, Dave.
So the, the mailbox area, the lines were painted before that plan was done because of, of recommendation or a request from the United States Postal Service.
And people parking probably in.
Deliver the mail appropriately, so.
Right.
Um, the, U, USPS made the request, did we have the line put in?
Okay. So then, again, why would the language then, as I read it, give? You know, versus the, the town specifically to require striping, it says, it gives U D.
We have no, we have no responsibility or requirement.
Of parking?
Yeah, yeah, unless you're gonna, unless you wanted to try to, you, when the P U D was done. Didn't got all the requirements, the only thing I can see is when they paved all these bump outs, they exceeded the amount of impervious area, which I don't know that they.
Right.
That's the only thing that's one would fairly agree with.
But don't you have, I mean, when I say you, doesn't the town have the right to ensure that it is a compliant, you know, conforming spot, it's twenty by ten? Without the striping, you know, you know that.
Well, I mean, it could be a nine by eighteen spot, that, that road's been allowed.
Yeah.
But the thing is that, 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 that. We don't have, we don't have a record plan that shows the bump out, so they're asking, and they came asking us to approve. Parking spots on, for a plan that we don't even have.
So if the plan was done, is it just, it was done in March with what and all, you know, what was the purpose of it being done in March, and now we're sitting here in November?
Well, the, the, uh, last meeting I went to was January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, it was requested, I believe, by New Orleans specifically, but everybody that I submitted.
So it was after the fact?
Sure, and it can be, we were, yeah, so we did the original plans for this development, they worked out plans that they had already done. Um, I had been over the last several months working with, uh, Ms. McKnight on, uh, the appropriate way to implement the plans. Uh, and we ultimately landed on, it's gonna be, need to be a special permit, um, so we, once we knew that, we put it on the schedule, which should happen tonight.
Okay. Um, I, I think I get it now. Took a little while, Jeff? You got anything?
Uh, give me a few minutes, I'll think of something.
Okay, and then, open to questions, just again, just say your name and your address, and then ask why, or make your point, and. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone, my name is David Mack, I'm an attorney who represents, um, Brian and Debbie Walsh, who live in the development. You've submitted some paperwork that hopefully you've had a chance to take a look at, um. I think the, the, um, the issue we have is, is, is not really with, I, I guess it is with the whole thing in the sense that. When the special permit was granted in nineteen eighty-one, they said, you know, specific condition that the board imposed was. Commission imposed was, um, no parking on the roadways. And there were no plans, as, as you correctly point out, showing any bump ups. They were put in at some point, no one seems to know exactly when, but they were put in at some point. And when they did that, obviously, they, you know, no parking was allowed, right, because, and that was clearly considered part of the roadways. And that worked fine for forty years, and then, um. And to come back and request an amendment, there, there really needs to be a demonstration of need for parking, not just, we need parking, and this, we want parking. This was a condition of the permit granted, as part of the character of the development, which is, of course, within the commission's purview. Um, so there's been no type of parking study showing how many spaces are needed, how many are occupied, what are they needed for? Everyone has a sizable driveway that has at least room for one, if not more than one bar and a garage, and. There's been no type of data to support deviating from the board's condition, they just wanna call the bump out areas. Not part of the roadways, um, and, um, and so, you know. Contextually or fundamentally, this is, they're asking for relief from the board from a condition that was imposed years ago, and which has worked, worked fine. And so fundamentally, I think that there has to be, you know, I've sat on boards, just like all of you. Has to be, you know, you're asking for special permission, special permit, and relief from a condition of a special permit. And there needs to be, it's the burden on, on them to show why they need this, not just anecdotally that we want more parking, or because people. Have voted for it, so that's, that's one thing, but more particularly as it applies to my clients. They want one, they wanna add fifty-four spots, and, uh, without a demonstration of need, and one spot. One spot right near my client's deck, twenty feet away. And, you know, that when they bought the property in twenty twenty-one, they understood, as the master deed said, there was no parking on roadways. It's a paved area, um, and it's not marked, there's no, there were no lines on there. And then soon after moving in, people started parking there, and it's, it's, you know, affects their, their joint and their property. It's very narrow, it's not a deep, um, bump out from the, the, the main area where people are. Traveling through the development, and when people park in there, their, their cars jet out. Such that when people wanna come and maybe just pick up their man. Such that when people wanna come and maybe just pick up their mail, it can create a hazard. And so I do think that this board has certainly has the. Jurisdiction to regulate issues of safety um on any roadway that's used by residents. And that's why I think that the the condition was imposed in the first instance, so. If the, if if you're not inclined to um to reject the amendment for the fundamental reason. I just ask that you strongly consider not allowing just this one space, instead of allowing fifty four spaces, allow fifty three spaces. This is a very, there's, there's no other very narrow or not deep. Uh, parking area or jut out area where they propose parking, it's very specific. There's no other parking space that's really close, specifically very close to a person's house like it is to my client. Uh, and they just don't want a parking spot where, as you've seen from some of the pictures, you're looking right out, especially in the summer, right out their deck. Same distance as you and I, and so. We'd ask that if if uh if you're not going to reject the amendment, or request for amendment, that at least. Um, eliminate the one space that is um peculiarly close to my client's property. There's no, there's no particular need for that one particular space, it's not like near a common area uh that are enjoyed by. Everyone, it's it's just another spot for those who live right nearby. Park their car or for a guest to park their car.
Either which which spot is this?
It's uh, if you look at my submission, it's 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 uh number two in the brassy way. Um, plans, if you look at our submission, we contain a blowout portion, blowup portion of that exhibit, I think it's E. Um. And it's one of them, I mean, the plans are really microscopic and hard for us to read, so we blew up the one part and we highlighted it. And so we just requested that be the only, if if you're not inclined to reject the amendment. They just, just limit it to fifty three spaces instead of fifty four, because it does have a unique impact. On my client's uh enjoyment of their property, and it does, due to the dimensions, create a hazard as. Uh depicted in some of the photos, Mr. Metaglia, you know, it's no secret, there's some litigation going on. Acknowledge it, it could be a hazard if there's one car parked there and the truck has to go around to get to the mailbox. Or somebody else is trying to get their mail, it's just not needed, there's, it's not a necessary risk for this one spot. And in the second alternative, if you will, um. If if you're not inclined to reduce the additional parking spaces to fifty three instead of fifty four, at least. Um, you're inclined to require uh hatch hatch lines and delineation of spots so people know where to go. You know, condition it on a no, a small spaceboat, no parking sign. So my clients get an additional protection because there's been a propensity to let people park there. The reason why we're here is they kind of ignore the special condition in our view, and so. Um, you know, we just want a small, attractive, no parking sign like there is elsewhere in the development and some screen. So that's all laid out in our submission, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thanks, Dave. Jeff?
Keep in mind that um these bump outs. In my opinion, the the association has the right and responsibility, if you will. To protect the people in the in the in the in the uh situation. And to tell everybody not to park there, I mean, they, we don't have to tell them to do that, they have all the power they need, the association does, to do that. They did not ask us for permission to put the bump outs in. They did not uh ask the Department of Safety or the Safety Officer from the Police Department to help behind on any of these parking spots or any. They didn't do any of that, they just randomly put the stuff in. So they 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 could. They have the ability and the power to say, no parking in this location, I mean, that's that's, they they put them in like that, they could, they can do that. So um, I don't. If if they're just trying to legitimize the um. The uh part, the new parking spots that take a look at these bump outs, it would be. You know, plan to the, a change to the P U D, which you'd have to, obviously have to submit a plan with those changes on it. Um, but that plan should be approved by the association before they ever bring it to us.
Oh, the question on that, Stephen, uh where did Stephen go? So Stephen, like, in order to um make this change, I think in in your. In your documents, you need seventy five percent of the owners to sign off on that?
Yeah.
And and that's what you have right now?
We have that already, including the plans.
Yeah.
They've signed off on the amendment and these proposed plans.
Okay. Is is that the majority, I mean, kind of, instead of having everybody get up, is like, you can show, raise a hand, the people that are here tonight, are you? Are you for this? If you wanna say, you know, raise your hand, you're for the parking? Okay, just wanted to get a sense of the people. Okay, yeah, it's hard to, it's hard to get a vote there, yeah, I mean, they can raise a hand, but. I I was, that was not like a, I'm not looking for numbers and account here, I'm just trying to get a sense.
I'm Brian Walsh, I'm a resident nearby. But Warren was just saying, enforcement doesn't work, we had a violation this weekend by a trustee. Sitting right over there that we reported in, there's no enforcement whatsoever at the parking doors. Yeah, that's ongoing. There are over four hundred and forty eight driveway and garage spots in that association. For the significant parking. And um, there's just no interest whatsoever to enforce parking in that mailbox area. Again, we have a trustee sitting here tonight, Wayne Mo, who was parking in.
It's Molly.
Molly, uh on Saturday. So we've seen one sign, one sign. But it was people in your house, you know, you go keep coming to your house.
That's like, again, in questions? Sir?
The the truck.
Sir, everybody, calm down, everything, we're just having questions to the to the board here, not between yourselves. If you want to definitely, absolutely go outside and talk, you know, um but.
That's not a good idea.
Hell, what?
All right, I I understand, looking, I'm not. I I understand the inclination of this sort of micromanaging association, that's not what we wanna do, it's just that. With regard to to requesting relief from the special permit, the only reason the board's even here is because we. My clients, you know, called into question the special permit condition, because they just, they just did what they wanted. And added these bump out areas and just deemed them to be not part of the roadways when they're paved and vehicles go there. And then, so, I mean, I I get it, you know, more parking tends to be favorable in time. But I think you have to demonstrate a real need to, you know, to get this relief. And I think that we've also demonstrated through our own evidence that, you know, to the extent that they have shown them, you. It doesn't extend to every single parking space, and there's no reason it can't be reasonably limited by us.
All right, appreciate it, Dave, go ahead, sir.
Yes, Jeffrey Lamb, um this is a suggestion that they've been made, the bump outs are all very rather recent recreations. I've lived there since since nineteen ninety four, thirty years I've lived there. I've been on the board on two different occasions, very actively involved in the community. I can't speak for all the bump outs that are there now, I will tell you now, the one that's on my street has always been there. Right adjacent to the mailboxes, and I'm sure that many others are that way too, and I also don't doubt that old years we've had others. But this is not a recent development, but cavalierly, cavalierly creating parking spaces. And yes, we have many parking spaces, trouble is, we have visitors that show up at our places too. If we don't have driveways big enough to accommodate them, so we do have bump out spaces, we can ask them to please park there. And I would suggest too, we do not have a police force where we live, that goes around and looking for people that are parking illegally, as you know. You really want that? No, it's one one sign. Oh, nobody seems to object to that, that. So, you know, we have a little gangmanship that's going on here, as I'm sure you know. So recognize what we're trying to do, we have to solve a legitimate problem, where it's so it is, that came into being in nineteen eighty four, kind of like the. Leave it a Bieber generation where we have one car per household, that's not the case anymore, is it? So we have a problem, we're trying to solve it, and I think they don't want a one whole job of it, so I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thanks, Jeffrey, go ahead and behind and go to, say your name and.
Uh Debbie Akari, I've lived here for thirty three years.
What ad, what's your address, Debbie?
Connor.
Your address?
Forty one Mid Iron Drive.
Thank you.
All right, we have a mailbox here, I never see anybody park there, I mean, I've lived here for thirty three years, I mean, we don't have enough of parking as it is. I mean, I, you know, I don't have a big driveway, if you have company, where do you put them? Where do you put them? You have to bust them in, I mean, it it's ridiculous, I mean, you know. There's not enough parking as it is, and we shouldn't be having to go through this, we need more spaces, not less.
Alright, go ahead.
I know all of you guys.
How are you?
And the posse fair baker, but anyway, Brenda Sutherland, forty minute iron drive, I just moved in two summers ago and um. Um, not even being told when I moved in that there was this, even this kind of lawsuit thing going on, kind of thing was upsetting enough. But the fact that um, you know, everybody is saying that there, there's definitely not enough parking over there, the fact that this was built in nineteen eighty two. This whole condominium association, um, and I have a bump out in front of my property. That um contractors need to use, okay, I only have one car because I'm the only one in my condo, okay? But I also have my son and and daughter-in-law and the kids that come up to visit. The fact that they've got two car garages, they can get at least two more, if not possibly three, four more in their driveway, that's possibly six, and they want a seventh spot. Out there, what makes them that much more privileged to have at least seven spots when some of us only get one or two? And we have company, you can't have a party without people parking down at the, you know, the clubhouse and having to be, you know, people shuttle up. Had a party the other week and it's like you're you're car- caravanning people up from the the clubhouse, the the, you know, parking lot up front. That in itself also creates an issue because, you know, it's it's just, it's just not fair. And again, like Deborah said, the fact that we're even having to discuss this and it's gotten this far over a parking spot. There's a lot worse things going on in the world than if you can't deal with six parking spots and you need your seventh one, thank you.
Hi, Paul Tess here, seven brassy way. So, many items have many issues, and I think there needs to be some clarity. Um, so the plan is currently written, says there's no parking on the roadways. We've heard about people saying there's been illegal parking, implying that people are parking on the roadways, those bump outs are not part of the roadway. Those bump outs are separate areas, just like the driveway. And those bump outs are no more part of the roadways than this parking lot is part of North Street. Right, it's your totally separate entity, so I think we need to separate this and make sure it's clear that there is no legal parking. Or parking that violates what's in the plans at this point, because they are not.
Well, Paul, just to be technically correct, they they are legal because they're not on any site plan that's in in in.
I'm not saying they're legal.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, that's.
I'm saying they're not violating that particular element.
I I I tend to agree with you that if they're not on the road, they're not part of the road, so like, I'll give you that point. And I'm I'm just saying, but just to be technically, they're 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 not on any plan of approval in these bump outs, so. And and I I give you that, they could have been, maybe the genesis of them were, um, they were there for the mailboxes. And then they just started to multiply a little bit without mailboxes, and that's how it happens, and that's how we all know things happen, but. That they're not on a plan, and that's, I think, one of the issues, and Warren's been on this commission forever, and he's seen, you know. This applicant, this applicant comes a few times, and each time it's like, where's. So uh, I can appreciate that, but thanks, Paul, anything else I didn't, I didn't mean to cut you off. You all. That you made your point.
That that was the one I wanted to make is.
Okay, anybody else?
Just add a little history to that, um, about back in two thousand nineteen, I believe, was the. Board had started to devise a plan for parking, um, that they were gonna, get an engineer to. Do all of that stuff that's already been done and submit it to the town, we go through this whole process. But that was kind of shot down by the pending lawsuit that eventually happened.
Okay. Go ahead, Warren.
Yeah, um. I don't have, I don't have any problem with it putting parking areas in the bump outs. Um, I do think there should be a consideration for the one that blocks somebody's house there, so I mean, and I would think that the association. Having the responsibility to take care of all the members of the association would agree to take care of that, I mean, it's a one one a one spot, I mean, I don't see what a what a big deal it is. But again, the association itself has the right to determine what they do with those. But they never really went through the process of making sure that, in fact, they didn't violate any part of the impervious area or any of those things, so. They're not, we we have no approval of them or anything else. The association owns that property, the association has the right to do what they would like to with it, if they wanna stripe it, put parking in it. As long as there's no, uh, as long as the majority of people are okay with that, I think that's probably okay. I mean, if you need the parking, that's a place to put it, those bump outs are not part of the original approval in any way whatsoever.
I don't know if it matters um to this particular instance, but board did approve, put one parking spot. In the um posed area and to put a no parking sign in the rest of that bungalow.
The one we're talking about here?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Just wanted to briefly respond to a couple things that Attorney Mack raised, um and and which we sort of just talked about, I think Attorney Mack alluded to the fact that these. Uh bump out areas were once undisputed part of the roadway, and then over time they became not, that's, they're simply not true, there's. The original plans showed the roadway very clearly, these bump outs are not part of them, so they're not, they were never part of the roadway. Um, the second thing he he mentioned is the need to show, um, for the obligation to show need. Um, I I think that's very clearly been met here with the uh the multitude of unithers who are who are behind me and on your screen. You could attest to the fact that that parking is needed to the area, so I don't agree that we need to show need to the extent we have, I don't know how much, much better you can do than this, frankly. Um, the the third thing he mentioned was that the um, there's a need to to make the area bound, uh, the. The specific spot that he's referring to safer, um, that's exactly what we're trying to do here, to the extent there were ever problems with cars sticking out. Or blocking the mailbox, that's literally exactly why we are here tonight in front of you, is to get these plans on record, so it's perfectly clear to anyone who buys property expecting. One thing and may not be what they're expecting, everyone can look at this plan and say, okay, there's one spot behind this house, it's not blocking their house, it's. It's a roadway.
Is that, and I don't need to interrupt you, but is that really the issue that it's not on a plan? I mean, if it's striped exactly as you say, it, they were striped, Matt, they're they're presently striped exactly like you say, from that March plan.
Ju- just, just the mailbox area, not the parking.
Okay, so not the parking?
Correct.
Okay, all right, I get you, go ahead.
Um, and 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 that's, you know, the spot, I think, Lauren, you may have mentioned, uh, it it's blocking their house, that's not what they're referring to, they have a back porch. Which leads out into a yard, beyond that yard is road, it's it's always, the cars can drive by that. There's also a mailbox there, people pull in, they get their mail, they pull out, that's not parking. What he, what Mr. Walsh and his attorney are referring to are people permanently parking in that area, what we're trying to do is give. One, the the space that we can fit in there is one space, and that's what we've done, we're not gonna give him preferential treatment as compared to the rest of the association. There's people on Mid Iron Drive and Brassy Way right there who need parking, so we're providing it the only way that we can. Uh, it it's not a, it's not a safety hazard to have a single spot, not blocking a mailbox, not jutting out to the roadway, it's just not. It's an aesthetic concern only for Mr. Walsh, he only cares about that one spot, um, and frankly, he's been there, as you said, since twenty twenty one. Um, he claims that he moved in and people magically started parking in this area. What what's more likely, that or Mr. Walsh doesn't know what happened prior to the beginning, and people have been parking there? For for a long time, um, so, yeah, I I think, you know, a lot of their points just, just wanted to.
Thank you. Look like you want to ask a question.
Um, I I I think I heard that there's, there's been an approval for a no parking sign. That, I don't think that's, I mean, that's the first time.
No, there was approval to paint no parking on the on the pavement.
I I I, okay, that that I understand, but we were requesting, it's like, they wouldn't sign, so. Um, yeah, again, it's just, I don't wanna go over old old ground, but um. It it's it's not, I mean, they're not asking for parking in every single jet out. You know, so a particular one spot in this particular area, I mean, I don't think it's a big ask that.
We are asking for the parking in every jet out they can do.
Right, yeah, is, I in the, I I get the sense, again, looking at the Hayes plan, that gives dimensionally all the bump out dimensions. But is there, um, and this is for anyone that's in the audience here, or certainly on Zoom, are there particular ones, though, that need to. That are not sufficiently deep enough that we're. that are not sufficiently deep enough that where, where cars do stick out into the main roadway? Because that would be, I think, where I am more concerned.
I, I think you'll see from the plans, there are some where we have to put them horizontally as opposed to vertically. Those ones, um, you know, I don't, I don't know for a fact whether. I assume what was happening was all these bump outs essentially look identical, but some just happened to be shorter than others. So people would pull in frontways and now we're saying in those particular areas.
Those will be parallel.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, all right. Uh, go ahead, sir.
Okay, but without markings, uh, like reference, it was Friday, not Saturday, and this is a trusty book. Without markings, people pull head in and they stick out into the roadway. We submitted pictures this weekend. So without striping for one car, it's going to be an ongoing safety issue problem. And the property manager now just in his deposition that it would be.
So are we adverse to striping, everyone? Is that an issue?
First strike for one car. First strike for one car and not parking.
Well, I don't mean that. I mean, aren't you gen- generally talking all spots?
Well, I, I, we, I, I should be the crack in the dude because that way people know where there's parking and not parking, as you said earlier. But at, at minimum, we are not opposing one spot if we have to get to one spot. All we're saying is one spot marked so they don't pull head in because it creates a safety issue in a small, little twelve-by-twelve no parking sign on the other side. This area is not new, deep areas. You cannot pull head in without sticking out into the roadway and people always pull head in.
So is this one of the spots where they show parallel parking?
Yes, it is. But again, we had a trustee on Friday, had a big truck pulled into the space, sticking out to the street, not using his own driveway. It's like.
Can I speak to that?
Sure, go ahead.
And, and that particular instance, the association documents have a policy, a warning policy and a fine policy that needs to be followed. So in that particular case, the trustee you questioned was warned.
Yeah.
Like I said, they can, they pretty much have their own.
Um, I kind of disagree, but, um, anyways, go ahead.
Yeah, a couple of things we commented in the chat. I just wanted to not miss those. Okay, um, and the emphasis that the extra parking is needed for guests. Um, Lila, um, okay, so it says Ed Sheehan, the lower down says clarifies this Renee Sheehan. I just wanted to clarify, because Mr. Sheehan is sitting right here. Danielle, the bump outs are separate from roadways. They are for guests and overflow. There is no danger. I live right across the street from a mailbox and there is never a parking issue, hazard or issue. If we get rid of the bump out, how can we park to get our mail? There's a mailbox there and it can't be moved. Uh, Renee Sheehan, five brass away. Um, I think that is everything.
So basically, if you're going to, um, if you want to accept any plan as a modification of the PUD, then you should just going to have to go through all the new things, going to have to, you move by the town engineer. Probably these are, uh, since this is a change in the road design, we have to have an inch yard, you know, kind of to power it all up. It does have to go some conservation to make sure that.
Well, conservation didn't really have any, there, there's one spot, right? That they said, which is near or in wetlands, so that would be one consideration.
Right, so, um, we're not talking about new paving.
Yeah.
So we're talking about paving what happens.
Right. Right.
That was a long ago it happened, so we're not talking about new.
Right, and then, and then the road line that is, was established and already engineered is, is still the same. So it's the bump outs, like you said, and I, I, I agree with that argument, like, there's no road added here. They were bump outs. The road is the same, so that the integrity of the road is the same, but, um, yeah, Jeff, did you have a question?
So I'm just curious, um, um, the association itself, um, I'm, I'm assuming you guys had meetings amongst yourself many times to talk about this and go over this at, at the Greens. Has, has that happened?
I guess.
Many, many times?
Yeah, never been an issue.
And, and so is it that you're coming to, you're coming to the board, even though it's an association and that's really, like Warren said, like, it's your stuff? So it, I'm, I'm a little perplexed because I would think that this maybe could have been settled at the association. But I'm guessing obviously not. So what I'm trying to figure out is where's, where's the, like, the great divide and the pushback and because I'm, what I'm, yeah, I'm guessing is that everybody understands these were built in the eighties. The parking is limited. This is all I'm hearing. Um, there is some space to find, to alleviate, you know, Christmas and all the great things that we all do as families. Um, and those spots where people will come and go, but it sounds like it's, it's just like an association, um, to me, issue that, that, you know, I, I, I'm not grabbing the full, Lauren, you gotta help me. Because I'm not grabbing the full gist of why the board has to be even involved in, in in deciding whether a bump out is part of the roadway. It's a bump out. The roadway is the roadway, the bump out's the bump out. They're, they're, so to me, I mean, personally, I'm looking at this. I've looked at, I've taken a few minutes. I've looked at which has mapped out. There's a couple of things that I can see, like, you know, when you twisted a couple of spots to try to get your nineteen-six. And, um, you know, I'm looking here and I, I mean, I personally, what I see, I, I don't see this to be egregious. And if it's a need in twenty twenty-four, when it was not even probably even imagined in nineteen eighty-three, I, I don't see where this is, yeah, I mean, I, if you need the parking and the association wants that additional space and it's not part of the roadway, to me, I'm just reading what I could see. Logically, that makes sense. The associations that say, hey, we've identified this available land. There's a need, so we've identified the need amongst all. Uh, and, and maybe, you know, modify if the association is, um, you know, willing to leak something to make this all kind of go. Um, so that, you know, the, the, the persons who are, you know, have or consider like number, the fifty-three to fifty-four spots. I mean, that to me seems like it's an easy go if you're only talking about the one spot to make that or help that person, um, out a little bit to get what they, what you really want, the fifty-three spots. I'd give up one spot to get fifty-three. I would, but that's not me. I mean, it's your association and.
What are you saying? I just want to understand too, because I, I, I agree with a lot of your argument. But are you saying that there, that, uh, a previously approved plan for X that has not been that way for a while, in, in increases impervious, there's no stormwater, uh, uh, clogs or anything on it, shouldn't go back in front of our commission? And, because that's a pretty wild precedent for the whole town. Like, we're just going to increase our parking by fifteen percent on this Walmart. We're going to go fifteen percent. I'm going to add another hundred spots. And I don't need to come to you.
So the, the, the thing is though, Dave, this has existed for a long time.
No, I get that. It's not, it's not that they create, yeah, we're not going backwards. I get that. I was just saying, like, when you said, like, this should all just be handled by, by.
Well, to some degree, I believe so. I mean, not.
Well, I think to, to make everyone happy, yeah, but they still do need to come through us because they've come to us a few times. And each time, the most recent with the, uh, this simulator, and we're like, there's neighbors complaining about parking. This was on the, more the.
Oh, golf thing.
Yeah, they're all over the place and where, where's your parking plan? Well, we don't have one, you know? Well, you know, you, you should have one and, um, so I think, I think, I, I, that's all I'm saying. I, I'm just, I do think they should be in front of us right now, is, is all I'm saying.
Right.
Whether or not we agree to it, that's absolutely up to the commission, but I, I do definitely think.
Yeah, I, I would say, yes, that would make sense, but like the argument itself seems like it's their argument.
Yeah.
Like it's, 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 it's the association and the people coming to an agreement saying, hey, we have fifty-four spots. Fifty-three of them are going to need for parking this morning on, and you just hash through it and then present it as a draft and then they go.
Dave, you are, I agree with you that if they're going to present this as a change, a permanent change of PUD, you're right. They do have to, they gotta go through the whole dog.
But that's the only, you know, that's the technical part and I get where Jeff's going on Brenda, sorry.
That's all right.
Your hand, your shoulder, okay?
Good five step work. Um, just one other thing is that, um, you know, I walk my pups up to that whole thing three times a day, morning, lunchtime and again in the evening. And the only time I see anybody even in that specific spot is if it's a contractor, that there's no other place to park. Seriously, honest to God. And the fact that if you say, okay, now we've got fifty-four spots, we're going to let him have his. Who's to say, I'm not going to come back to you tomorrow and say, well, screw you guys, I've got two spots in front of me. Park in front of me. It starts a whole avalanche effect.
It's like going back to Southie where I moved.
Yeah.
My char table.
It starts a whole thing. And it's like, you moved in there and whatever you already moved in kind of thing. When I moved in in twenty-two, I knew that there was a bump out in my spot. I knew that there was a, a middle condo and if the end condo had two spots already because you had a double garage. I knew that the people next to me, I was going to be sharing that space with them because they've got two daughters that come and visit and stuff like that, that they're going to need that space to park. You think I'm going to come before you and say, I don't want that daughter parking there? You know, I mean, you, you need spots. If you start giving this person one spot, it's, it's going to start a whole avalanche effect kind of thing. And it is very unfortunate that we can't settle this within a condo association because somebody or someone or whoever wants to get holy and mighty and start bringing in attorneys and everybody else and make this a place that's not livable anymore.
I know.
I think, I think.
And that's what's sad about all this.
I appreciate that, Brenda. And I think what I want to do, though, is just stick to kind of the more technical side, like, I, I have an open mind for the need for the parking, but I want some sort of, um, baseline to be established of this. So, because we didn't have one, you know, the bump, the bump outs just came, you know, was immaculate. They just showed up, you know? Somebody just dropped asphalt from the sky. But now that we know that they're there, you know, we need to quantify, like, that needs to be shown on a plan. And then they can't continue to grow. Like, oh, there's a new, the baby was just born to get another bump out, you know? Um, we need to know, the, the town needs to know that we can't just keep paving and paving. So, um, it's a good opportunity to capture it, um, with the town with the new plan that's been submitted. And the other thing I would say is for some consistency and convention in parking. So the problem that you described, so for a parallel parking spot, or perhaps if someone's pulling into a parallel parking spot perpendicular, that tells me that the spot's way too deep. You know, so is, if there's instances where that, that spot needs to only be ten, eleven feet deep. That would tell a person, trade whoever in his big van, that he's sticking ten feet out in the road, right, basically. Um, if it's not, and it's fifteen feet deep, but oh, it's, it's, this is a parallel, how does somebody know that? So the, the poor trader or whoever parked there, they might unknowingly, and I would maybe do the same thing. My Mini Cooper would fit in there perfect, but I, I, you, you just go in straight. So striping to me is super important and then having a consistency in, in those spots. Because all, what I saw in those planes is just a lot of irregularities. And so there's just triangles and hash marks and everything like that. Um, so that everybody knows there's a, there's, there's four spots here, there's six spots here, there's a mailbox parking. Is that given in right now?
If your concern is that, in all that, is that the, we should agree to, to stripe, now we may stripe, but we will stripe. I, I can't speak, I don't have authority from the association to agree to that now. I can't imagine that that would be the thing that would, that would hold us along.
I, I can speak to that. The, the board has discussed that. We does want to line those parking splits.
Well, wouldn't it also, like, prevent a lot of the, what I'm seeing here, a little bit thick and pinched, just.
You would think.
Yeah, you know, because think of it too, just, just for ourselves and every day. If every, whether it's our place of work, we're heading to a mall, if they just got rid of striping and it's just a free for all.
Right.
You know what I mean? Imagine that?
Ooh.
Yeah, so the striping really does create some sense of order.
So the board agreed to the striping and the board agreed to accommodate the opposition
Yeah.
in that one particular spot.
So it sounds like, you know, you're, you're getting there, you know?
Why we're here.
Yeah, so exactly. So why we're here. But, um, but I think, again, the why we're here part is good. It, it's good to get that updated plan. Um, and, yeah, so, um, well, first I'll just ask, any questions, Max? You're good? And then Jeff, any other?
No, I mean, as long as something comes back, like you said, that makes sense.
Oh, I have, I have another person to, and I think.
Nina Chambers, thirteen Brassway. I've lived here for almost twenty-four years. And when we bought, we knew this is your property, this is your driveway. Bump out is for everybody's second car. And the people all in mind, who's, I'm in a building of four. Everybody knows pretty much what it is. And like the people that are complaining, they do what they're getting. So now what's this going to do to us? Another assessment for, what, to go through the town for all this crap?
Yeah, very important to your point about. If, if there's no lines and there's no indication that parking is allowed, there are no cars there. Certainly, my clients don't think there was a parking left there. There are no stripes saying you can park there. And there's no, you know, I get it. What everybody bought into this and the, and the, um, and the, you, you know, the they said, no parking on the roadways, you're not allowed to park on the streets. So, yeah, I get it that, that people want more parking. And again, I don't think, and, and there has been no, like, offer to accommodate with a, you know, a small wooden sign, not just striping. But so when you're actually pulling in, you see, okay, you can't park here and park here. Um, it's not just on the ground because people sometimes just see the normal. Um, so, yeah, I, I mean, we brought this whole thing because no one recognized the special permanent condition and no one recognized that you need to get seventy-five percent vote. And so I don't want to say you should thank me for, for all this trouble, but.
I won't. And I get it, but you just left that.
Soft wall hanging there. But, but it's, but it's, you know, when, when people get permission to do things from the board and then they do things on their own over the course of time. Of course, the commission has the authority to make sure that they're complying with their own decisions of the issue. So, you know, I, i- it's a lot of work and it's not easy and I'm sure you ruffled feathers. But we initiated this thing because of the special permanent condition and seventy-five percent. And I'm glad that we finally got to this point. And I hear that everybody is, is against our position. And I certainly can appreciate that. Again, we're just looking for that one movie. Please, if you want to. It's more information for them.
Well.
At least one more meeting or.
We could tell them a little, but I would, but I would say that if you're going to, if you're going to start down this road, it's a little bit of a rocky road, done stuff without permission. Uh, if you were, as it were, so you, you made changes to the PUD without, you know, without proper hearings or a proper, um, input from engineering, conservation, from anybody, actually. And if you were going to put parking spots in places where they were in normally, you would probably want the safety officer to go out and say, okay, this is okay, this is okay. That's what we would do if you came in here cold, you know, just starting out. We'd require all of these things to be looked at, to make sure that your roadway is safe and that you could get in and out of the parking lots, spots safely and so forth. So, um, I was kind of hoping that it would not be such an onerous situation, because it can get expensive as well.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm, I'm leaning towards, um, you know, again, just having that little tap of the brakes just to make sure that this, the bump outs and the spots that are represented in this plan, you know, are safe. And if that's the case, and, you know, the goal would be if it's fifty-three minus one, um, fifty-four minus one, fifty-three, if during, if from that exercise, from the town side, you know, for public safety, you know, they make recommendation, you know, this one area, we, you could rectify that, you know, maybe help them, you know, to take care of that. So you maintain that same amount of spots. Or it might be concession that, yeah, this is kind of unsafe, so we have to drop the spot or two. But that's what I'd be looking towards if, um, if the rest of the members are in agreement on that. But that would, I just would like an extra meeting. So at the next meeting, I think we'd be able to vote, you know? And, and I think, I'd feel better about than just kind of hastily voting tonight. But, um, but we, I do hear you and I think the rest of the commission hears you on the need for the more, uh, more spots. And this will at least put it on the books legally and all that. So I think ultimately we want to do it right. So if that makes sense to you, Stephen. Go ahead, Daniel.
I'm just wondering, as far as just clarifying, because if we're looking to the next meeting, I want to be able to put together a draft decision. Um, just so that I'm understanding what we think we're aiming for. I think what we're looking to do is to ex- potentially accept the plan that's been shown with the bump outs as the new plan, however, maybe with a, an explanation, a clarification that those bump outs are not in fact part of the roadway and that the. And that the no parking on roadway provision doesn't apply to them. Um, because I realized that what the applicant has requested is, is to remove the provision that there's no parking on the roadway, and so potentially that could be.
If you look at the, if you look at the application, it says. Which currently provides that there shall be no parking on the roadways, the trust needs to add the following language to paragraph eighteen after the existing sentence.
Um, and then to have language in there with making an exception for the the space that is in question.
I mean, or or I think that's more for them to handle. Ours would just be, you know, again, looking at.
Are we gonna make a mo- minor modification of it, is that?
No, that was just a public hearing. It's been routed to the departments. It's been, it's not the full public hearing review. So I, this would be modifying, it would be a made, a regular modification of the special apartment.
Yeah, okay.
So you're, so just to clarify, we're we're requesting having a safety officer come out and view the the spaces.
I think I even, Jeff and I like to go do site, I I'd like to go out there and really check out this a little bit myself. And then, so within, we could have a conversation with with safety, with police, and just make sure, you know. I don't, I don't wanna drive you there and see cars all in into the roadway. So, yeah, so that means that's, if I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, so that's good. It's a beautiful development, so I I just wanna be sensitive to that and make sure.
Is that something we can get scheduled tonight, or?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we we're.
You can't come, there's no place to park.
Um, so we usually don't have an issue, um, as far as that goes, when it comes to like a site visit. Usually, me and Warren or one of the guys will just get together and make sure, like, we shoot through there. Um, and, you know, just, kinda just cruise through the place and talk about it.
Yeah, I don't think in this case, it, because it's not that specific that we need to like have a big meeting, it'll just be more, we'll make sure everybody goes through there. But, um.
But if you let us know ahead, we can have wine and cheese.
Might take you up on that.
Can I just ask for one clarification? You know, just looking, uh, with the the plan, engineering plan that was submitted. You're looking for something that's more drilled down into?
No, I don't think, I think your plan is submitted is sufficient, right? I think I just want everybody on the commission to get a better look at it and understand, like, we're we're proposing parallel. Or straight in spots, like what what exactly um those spaces look like, and there could be some recommendations. Uh, made from uh public safety, uh, and and then. Whether they're taken up or not, some of it is is up to you, you know, but ultimately, we'll be the ones that will be accepting the change. So, um, but that's also, I, so I would ask if you're, for your patience in that, and we'll just, so tonight, what we'll do is continue to the next meeting. Which is December second, I believe. Um, and that's when, you know, I think we'll be in a better place. But if you have that, so, um, if you have, I think, the motion.
If you have it, um, okay.
Yeah, this is.
There are two motions, one to continue, I think the second one is the motion to.
Oh, I see, okay. Sure, I'm sorry, Danielle, thank you. Yeah, if you want, are we good? Everybody on the line, all? We're good. Okay, I move that the community planning commission vote to continue the public hearing. Uh, to mid-Ion Drive until December.
Second.
Second. Do we have a time, Danielle? At uh eight P M.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, December third. December third is the.
Okay, are you on motion, Mr. Griffin, in a second? Then you are, all in favor? Any further discussion by the board?
Well, yeah. Gotta make sure you have your eyes on peace cry. Of who's something that doesn't have muster, somebody else will come in the next day and say, well, it's anybody's.
Yeah, I know, that's that's why I was saying precedent. Um, and any other discussion, other than that, okay, is Warren, um, all in favor, say aye. Cheers, aye. Oh, so four in favor, so we'll continue to the third. And appreciate everybody's uh participation tonight. Thank you, trying to keep it civil, I understand. Hot subject.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're just waiting on you. So, um, Danielle, we just have the two meeting minutes, anything else? Um, you can go ahead with updates if you want. Oh, I need to do that.
Free update, so I can.
Yeah, well, go ahead.
Um, my main theme is, um, the floodplain bylaw. But I brought up a couple of meetings, um, so we do need to require, or we do need.
I don't know, I'm sorry.
So we are going to need to update our floodplain bylaw in order to accept the new FEMA map panels. They still haven't been released, but we're expecting them to be released between December and January. I think if we can swing it, we should try to put it on the same special town meeting, otherwise we could be looking at another special town meeting, just to make sure that.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
So my thought was to put it on the next agenda for our discussion. My approach was going to be, um, we've revised our floodplain bylaw a million times over the years, and it's honestly a mess. It's it's to the point where I think we just need to start fresh. Um, FEMA has put out a model bylaw, and it just just does the requirements that we would need to meet in order to stay in their flood insurance program. And I think that that's really the model we should use. Our current bylaw has all this stuff about the building code and all this stuff that we actually had, would have had to eliminate, reorganize. It was, I was trying to go through it, and I was honestly getting so confused, but I don't know how we would even explain it to anyone. I think we should just strike it, start new, and just put in our environments that we have to do. So I thought that would be my approach, if that seems okay. We'll put it on the agenda for December third, and.
In the past, we had a reason for that.
Sure.
When we, when, but but now that most of the major development in this town is done, it's not as applicable if it likes on.
Changed. And there were places where our 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 floodplain bylaw was actually contradicting. Some of the other measures that are now needed for stormwater. I mean, they were actually opposed to each other, and there was really no way to reconcile it. So we need to start fresh. We should, we'll discuss it at the next meeting, and then at that point, we should probably schedule a public hearing for that, too.
Yeah.
Um, which, you know, if you want, I could advertise something, but I think we should discuss the contents of it first before.
Yeah, so we'll do that on the third, I guess, right?
Yeah, the the, yeah, and then we can advertise a hearing probably for, yeah, for January.
So same one as the A U.
Same day.
Mr. Griffin.
We're just going through.
So, I, I'm not totally familiar with the floodplain bylaws, so by changing it, you know, I hear there's artists building stuff in it. This is gonna open up any land in the community.
The report came out?
Not yet. We have to do everything we can to prepare for it. So, okay, so what happens is every about once a decade, it could be less, it could be a little more. FEMA releases, um, new maps, um, showing flood prone.
They use like topographic data and?
Yep, they use. Exactly, they have a variety of ways that they have to predict where inundation is likely to occur. So those change a little bit every time they release them. And so every time they release them, all the communities that participate in the National Flood Insurance Program, which is pretty much everybody. Has to accept them, because if we want to participate in their flood insurance program, we have to accept their maps. So, um. Process, but you don't have to do that. You can actually do, some communities do it in administrative view. We've always done a special format process, and I wasn't really going to talk about that. We changed that, just because this is how we've done it. Um, but basically, um. We won't know where the flood prone zones are until those new map panels get released. But they're not actually released, I mean, there have been drafts released over probably the last ten years. I know the engineering department has reviewed several rounds of them over the years, but probably not our current town engineer, but our our previous couple of. So when those maps come out, um, our choices will be to accept them into the town's bylaws. And remain in the flood insurance program, or to not accept them, and we don't remain in the National Flood Insurance Program. And then anyone in our threatening with flood insurance. So it's actually, it's a pretty clear option to to not do it. Um, so we really do have to do it. So what the schedule is, FEMA expects to release these map panels with their new titles and dates. Sometime late December, January. We, at the same time, need to make the updates that they are requiring, not only to accept the map panels. But the updates that are made just to modernize floodplain bylaws, all community users have to do that. So it's really two things that we need to do, but we can do it in one bylaw. And if we can do it, if they release it in time for us to have enough notice that we can work it into our bylaw. We can take care of it at the special town meeting that we intend to have in January to take care of the A U bylaw. If we miss that deadline, and say they release, you know, the maps in February. We probably would be okay for the June town meeting, but if they release those maps in January. We haven't made any provisions to make them the town meeting and set them. We may have, we may get beyond the six-month window, and they have to be adopted within six months. So, just to avoid having to have another special town. Um, so I I hope I did.
I think that makes sense, very good.
I have a question, the special town meeting in in uh January, is that what you said?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And what's on the agenda for that meeting?
Well, R A U stuff, and then this, and then what else? I don't know.
And if we have anything else, yeah, those two things would be what we're hoping to address.
It's gonna be interesting to see that floodplain.
How much are changes?
Yeah.
Well, in ten years, I would imagine it was a lot.
I think so too, but.
Get drafts of what has been released before.
Not my house, buddy, kidding.
We don't get a large.
Really?
Sometimes, yeah.
You think around areas that are developed, that got developed in the ten years?
The only time it really. The only time that it really is, is somebody's buying a property, or if they're refinancing. That's when it usually come up to see if there is floodplains, so they could always been in the floodplain. Anyway, Danielle, you take it away.
No, it's okay, just don't worry. It, most of our maps, because we're not coastal, so we don't have these, um, inundation zones from, uh, storm surges. What we do have are just these inundation areas from, um, inland lakes and wetlands and everything else. And that is pretty dependent on elevation. So while we would expect there to be a little bit of increase in the amount of flood prone area that we have, sometimes. Areas get taken out of it, sometimes more areas get put in, but for the most part, our our topography has stayed about the same.
It it seems, though, for, I live on Duane, and Foley, um, or sorry, Elm cruises right through that area. And that, uh, that house in particular, right in the corner of sixty-two in Elm. Each year, during, when Ipswich swells, gets more and more, like, it it almost comes up to Elm Street. Yeah, so, and I've watched that just in my short, you know, fifteen years. Yeah, yeah, so it's, it it is, it does seem to be the elevations of existing topography, like you said. Areas that were already wet, but they just seem like that high watermarks are higher now.
I think you're right, and the lower is lower.
Yeah. So capacity is, yeah, maybe it's not at that threshold now, but like even even at the corner of Elm. Um, as you head up to April, well, on big storms, again, that never used to get that way, but now it can get up to the road level. Right there, and it never used to be that way. Some some people are saying, since they repaved, they did something with the diverting, the water that comes down, sheaves down the hill.
There's also a place I call, uh, Lindwood Ave. Um, there's, there was big wetland out there, but there, but because of the number of years ago, the town went through good drainage, it's all through there. And we stopped to the floor of one of the people's houses, but they also dried that wetland up completely.
Oh, wow.
So you've gotta get changes from things like.
Yeah, it's development typically is what's gonna alter kind of that, but.
I mean, it may only be four, five acres, so maybe it's not significant, but it but it happened.
Yeah. All right, so that's good, Danielle, and then, so we we wanna, what's, so what is, what is the reason Bruce needs a, an extension? Because I remember the last time we checked in with them, they were planning to maybe hit the ground this fall, you know, I remember here. So what's kind of the latest?
They submitted a letter.
In the, in the letter, it said it was just because of current interest rates and the cost of building materials. He was looking to wait a year for more favorable group economy, which.
Again, but it's resi, it's not, it's not building.
That's still pretty, so that's a big factory, even in residential.
It it. It's, resi's really not that bad right now, and then the main thing is.
Materials are still pretty high.
Um, I mean, we're not seeing, all metals are down right now, coppers are all time low.
A lot of building.
Well, I mean.
Way different, so.
Yeah, I, I, we're not, I'm not seeing that in the resi side as much. I mean, it's gone, it's not like COVID levels right now. You know, and then, right now, all developers that are building and are successful. You know, and then, right now, all developers that are building and are successful are doing residential right now. You know, there's no office, there's no, you know, retail, it's all resi, because resis are like hotcakes, so that's why when I see a person tap the brakes. The brakes on a resi project, I'm kind of going, huh?
It could just be that he's got too many fines.
Yeah, that could warrant, because we, you know, all, I'm involved in multiple resi projects, and they're like golden hotcakes, they don't stay on the market long at all, you know. But we, if Bruce is building a retail center or. Business office park, I'd be absolutely hundred percent understanding why he's not building. No one wants some. Um all right, either way, though. Do we, do we have a motion? Do you want to read it, do you have a motion?
I do, uh we're in here, um. Yes, uh one forty-six, one fifty Park Street. Uh I move the community planning commission vote to grant the requested extension of time to complete. The one forty-six, one fifty Park Street senior housing overlay for one year until February second, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
I have a motion and second, any further discussion? Seeing there's none, all in favor, say aye. Cheers, aye. Opposed? unanimous. I was, too bad, I was hoping to see that thing start, you know, me too, I know, it's a great.
I thought the letter was pretty good, except for that he had his last, the last, that last sentence on that letter.
What is reason?
We are, yeah, well, actually, the the last sentence, not the, not the reason sentence, the last sentence.
Which was?
It says that, you know, that Bruce wants to make sure that he can build a quality product. Insinuating that if we don't give him the extension, that he couldn't build quality.
Or we'd almost say no, I'm gonna.
For the plan for that, they moved in the Wheeler House.
You know, it's.
Yeah, they are.
Sometimes the lawyers, they get that, with that one more, they shouldn't have just stopped right there, they wouldn't have been talking.
They're putting it on a new foundation, and and then with that, they're gonna, they they tried to not move it back, remember the cave shows were like, really? So they are moving it back, because that really makes the sightlines max, if you're on the police station. And you're on that sidewalk, you have that blindness with the fence, so they're gonna move the fencing back and the house, so it's gonna.
Not move that much, though.
Not a lot, but it's enough, it's a ma- it's a major thing to where that corner won't feel so pinched by that. So I think it's gonna, it's also gonna get rotated slightly.
And that will still be offices?
Um that's a good question, yeah, I mean, I guess. Keep in there, yeah, so, yeah, so they're gonna move that, that should be interesting to watch.
You're like over fifty-five years old.
Yeah.
It's funny, you look at that thing, that's pretty.
It does agree, it's a great thing. All right, so let's try to get out of here, guys, so we, let's do, do we have?
Four to minutes?
Let's do the two minutes, and then we can.
I heard from the Central Street members that they were requiring about it, having potentially a meeting to discuss um.
Oh, two.
Side one, um which I'd be happy to wait just a little bit with steering to a.
Yeah, I mean, I'm all for it, you know, like, I wanna, I don't know how we, you know. I don't know how the town just, you know, we have to get it as a priority, and is it like, these people that are more involved, especially that live there. Is it, is it, you build, you know, two hundred yards at a time, you know, or like, is it, is that how it has to be done, but at least. You look back, you look back five years and it's done, you know what I mean, so it's. Because everyone looks at the price tag for the whole thing, but is there a way to just?
Well, it's actually phased, it's actually a phased project.
Yeah, but.
I think the first phase goes to Spruce Street, is that correct?
Um, I think so.
Yeah.
Is there any, any requirements that it has to be fully funded, if you're gonna do, is it any of that kind of stuff? They don't make a new that, do they?
Okay, generally for smaller segments of it, and one of the sticking points had been that it, those grant programs tend not to cover the cost of police details. And so what we're doing is every year, requesting from the capital committee, the cost of the police detail plus the additional construction, it's just too much money. The D P W um put on their capital requests for for this year, they they submitted a schedule, you know, upcoming years, and they potentially put it on. Not for this coming fiscal year, but for the one after, which doesn't mean it would get funded, or that the request would stay as it was, but I I'm gonna be meeting with um town engineering director. To figure out what we need to put in place to to make that a a. A serious um and high priority D P W request for for next year's round.
Right.
So they have to figure out what what they need, but um and you know, it would be helpful for them. For us to at some point soon have have a public meeting, just to be sure that they're buying from those neighbors, I mean, I would have the town engineer.
Yeah, I'd love to understand more, because I haven't attended any, I know they had meetings um outside of like this, you know, C P C or whatever. Um I'd like to understand it more, the issues, I know it's trees, very old trees. Um but it is such an important spine through the city, through the town, that gets you to the park, you know, that it really should be safe. Um, you know, so anyways, I I totally get it, so, yeah, whatever you gotta do, uh, you know.
It doing, um it might keep talking for the holidays, but maybe like thoroughly after.
Sure, yeah.
It also goes the other way, too.
What?
It goes the other way, because if you get from Central Street down to North Street, you can get, go to Old Shop Center, and you, yeah, you gotta, you can walk the whole thing at that point, so. So it's.
Yeah, no, it's, it's an important.
If you're honest with, you're starting from North Street end, it's a lot easier to start from the other end.
Yeah.
That's not the way the phases were set up, the phases were set up to do the the uh Park Street end first, so.
Park Street end first. All right, so much you're, if you want to.
The minutes that you want. This stuff, please tell me what you want.
Or to sign those, we'll just do that on. Yeah, we'll do the, so we'll do the endorsements when we're done, right, we'll just.
Okay.
And we'll all get up.
Yeah, I move the community planning commission vote to accept the minutes dated October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, is right.
Second.
Thank you, Warren, and motion is second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Uh I move that the community planning commission vote to accept the select vote minutes dated September nine, twenty twenty-four, is right.
Uh second, that is all.
Motion is second, further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Um I move the community. Planning commission vote to endorse plan entitled two oh nine dash two eleven Main Street.
Second.
Motion is second, further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, uh I move that the community planning commission vote to endorse plan entitled five hundred River Park Drive. Um second.
Second, I got a second from Ed Sheen, his first. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Uh I move that the community planning commission vote to endorse plan entitled sixty-six Water Street.
Welcome to.
Oh, sorry, industry.
Motion, they got a second from Ed, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right. Plans are endorsed, so we just need to sign.
These are just some of the older plans that we forgot to get you to endorse, since they were approved, so.
Thanks, everyone, that that was kind of fun today.